Just want to cover the bases.
Cover the bases.
Yeah, yeah, I get it. I get it. I don't have a problem with it. It's like almost what we do with our, when we go through the public meetings, right?
Yeah.
This does not constitute approval or denial of this particular file. It just covers the bases. Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. It's being moved in a second. Madam Clerk, just to let you know. Any debate on the amendment? No? All those in favor? Pose. That's carried. On the main item itself as amended, all those in favor? Pose. That's carried. Counselor Chapman, if you don't mind, DS 2032. Counselor Mayor Pietri and myself will not be participating.
DS 2032, I actually pulled it for a recorded vote on or the, what do you call them? Declarations, but people to speak to it? Counselor Nicholson?
Yes, I'd like to move the Part II of the recommendation. We refer back to the Central Business District Improvement Area Board for further consultation with their membership.
Second, there? Ross, for no second?
All right, if I could just speak to that then. I ask for a division. The item two be divided from the remainder of the motion.
Okay.
The reason I'm not supporting that, I do not believe that the BIA board consulted with their membership in any way appropriately. As I've stated previously, I don't think it should be council's role to approve the BIA budget at all, but unfortunately, the province of Ontario makes it a legislative requirement that we have to approve their budget even though we have no input, consultation, participation in the development or choosing of the budget amount. That leaves the impression in the community that the City Hall is taxing for $649,000. And we're not. It was not part of our budget process. We've not reviewed their budget. I'm never going to approve a budget I know nothing about. I'm never going to approve a budget that just gives me a monetary figure but doesn't lay out the details of their budget, how it was developed. When you couple that fact that large segments off their own membership, when they tried to find out why this budget amount was set, we're told it was none of their business and that they're only there to get information. I think there has to be further consultation with the membership. It is not up to Sevastopol to solve the BIA's problems. It's why they have their own independent organization. That's why we got out of from 17 and 18, because it was, they're not our body. We have no participation other than our one liaison representative on the board. It doesn't come through any of our standing committees for review or approval. So I think the whole process is in, you know, needs to be looked at. But it is absolutely unfair. If we tried to pass a budget with a public consultation to our taxpayers, we would be chastised greatly. The fact that BIA is trying to do it without adequate consultation to their members is something I don't want this council drawn into. And I would have preferred to simply go back to have them do further consultation, since they've got until June to actually start collecting the amount of money. But council chose otherwise, so they'll simply be voting against Part II when it comes forward.
Other speakers? Counselor Guyberson?
Just very briefly, there are a few things that I agree with on Counselor Nicholson's comments. I do, you know, I do agree that the moves to make some of these changes did happen at an ambitious pace. However, I have been all along observing and hearing from people in the downtown, businesses in the downtown, hearing and learning about the feedback, the consultation, and so forth. And it's my opinion that the case has been made that this is going to be a good move and put our BIA in a strong place. You know, I also agree with Counselor Nicholson that it is a bit of a strange place to put municipal councils in through the act, that we're, it gives the appearance that, you know, the council is more involved in this than in fact we actually are. But that is, it is what it is, and you know, I don't think there's much we can do today to change that. I don't want to see anything, you know, further delayed in this process, though. It's at a point now where it's time to get on with it. It's time to, you know, if this BIA board and the various committees and other proponents have a vision and it's a, and you know, it's a strong one that they want to move forward with, it's time to just get this moving because they need at some point to be able to know what their budget is going to look like for the year that we're now in. So, you know, with that in mind, I urge council to do as much and help them get on with the vision that they're putting forward. Thank you.
Other speakers? Counselor Gray?
I think probably the biggest disappointment here is they didn't even try and phase it. We know the clinic is going to be closing in a few years. Their BIA levy is going up by $50,000 in this, if we approve this. Two years from now, when the clinic's closed its doors, they're not going to be able to get that $50,000 probably. And so they're now going to have to pass it on to the rest of the membership yet again. That's a mighty big hit, right there. And so the fact that they haven't given any consideration to a phasing in process, I won't be able to support this recommendation that's in front of us. I know that we've been put in the untenable situation, but still, somebody has to say, hey, hold on, guys, you're not going to increase your levy exponentially and then two years' time, come back to your own BIA members and have to make up that $50,000. No thanks.
Other speakers? Counselor McConkey?
Thank you. If I could ask a question of staff to the previous speaker's comment about the clinic closing, we'd be talking about the Oshawa Clinic on King Street, and we did have a delegation at Development Services speak from King Oshawa Clinic Group that's there, and he said they're at full occupancy. I did ask if it had sold, and he indicated no. What's this now that we're hearing? This information that was just shared in public? Do we have any information on that?
Commissioner Monroe?
Through you, Counselor Chapman. My understanding is that the numbered company that owns the building, which is made up of doctors from the Oshawa Clinic, has sold the building to a third party, and there are now a tenant within that building. And so I believe that they might be looking at opportunities to move to another location at some point in time.
But you recall, do you not, Commissioner Monroe, that the delegation that spoke on behalf of that company that fills the building with 60-odd professionals and businesses, said they're at full capacity, and yes, they've been also filling the clinic up on Taunton Road, but he didn't mention anything about it closing?
No.
Would have been the opportune time, do you not think?
In fairness, he did talk about that a third party now owns the building. Pardon me? Yeah, so, and that they lease it. So what's going to happen with the rest of it is only speculation.
Yeah, speculation going on here. Okay, so I'm fully in support of the motion that we have before us, and to say it's unfair is unfair. We have to support our downtown and get it really a vibrant place where we've got people coming. And it takes money to make money, as we all know. So I fully support, I understand, we have a council member on the BIA board that's in support, and I attended their AGM. I attended the committee meeting where we had speakers. There has been a true, I'd say, wave of support among the downtown people through the people I've met going through door-to-door in the downtown with the Accessibility Advisory Committee. No one was speaking ill of our downtown BIA, so I think it's time that we show that we have support and give them our best. Thank you.
Counselor Kerr?
Thank you, interim Chair Chapman. And as the council representative on the BIA, I feel compelled to add a couple of points to this. We had a fulsome discussion at Development Services about this, and the committee supported it. And as I feel that council should support this coming forward, with respect to the one particular organization whose BIA levy will go up, you know, a significant amount, I think what is necessary here is to provide some perspective. As it is right now, there are 60 medical doctors within the Oshawa Clinic, each of whom share that levy at a cost of $125 per year, per doctor. The average downtown BIA member will see their levy go to about between $1,000 to $1,500 per year. When this levy is increased on the Oshawa Center to balance and make it equitable to the size of the organization, each doctor's rate will go to about $750 a year, which is still only $60 a month. The average BIA member will pay about $100 a month. So is this, quote, "unfair" to the Oshawa Clinic? Depends whose perspective you're looking at it from. But the reason why the clinic benefits from a collective is because the costs are shared. And the same thing happens with this particular item. So a phase-in approach, if you were at the discussion at Development Services, and if you've heard the discussion from the BIA, a phase-in approach really handcuffs the development of the staffing necessary to deliver on what it is the BIA wants to achieve in the downtown, to make it grow. And this is what the membership requested, almost required of the BIA to do, and in order to provide that level of service, they've actually had to cut one staff because of the budget situation this year. And the other staff members have gone on partial hours to have been able to stay within budget as it stands now. So the interesting thing to me is when it was presented that, I don't know whether it's about 30 years ago when the BIA was in operation, they had to make do with, quote, "a budget of only $150,000." So I asked Ivano, who is the treasurer, Ivano Leverchows, if he would take a look at inflation, the impact on that $150,000 in today's numbers. That budget of $150,000 back then would be well over $600,000 today, and surprisingly enough, that's the budget that the BIA is looking to advance to. So no, it's not an exorbitant amount. It's putting the BIA, our BIA, on a level pegging with every other BIA in the province. The reason why we took the cap off, we were only one of two municipalities that still had one, and it was severely holding back the BIA over the years from advancing their budget to keep pace with other BIAs of similarly sized municipalities. What the removal of the cap and what the institution of this increase does now is to put us on level pegging with other municipalities that adequately and indeed well support their downtowns. That's what our BIA members wanted, that's what this budget does, and I strongly urge council to support this recommendation coming forward. Thank you very much.
Other speakers? Madam Clerk, we have a recorded vote. We'll start with item number one, recommendation number one, paragraph one.
Counselor Chapman?
Yes.
Counselor Guyberson?
Yes.
Counselor Gray?
No.
Counselor Hurst?
Yes.
Counselor Kerr?
Yes.
Counselor Mayor Pietri has a declaration. Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor McConkey?
Yes.
Counselor Neal?
Yes.
Counselor Nicholson?
Yes.
Mayor Carter has a declaration.
That's carried. Next one is recorded vote on number two, paragraph number two. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
Counselor Chapman?
Yes.
Counselor Guyberson?
Yes.
Counselor Gray?
No.
Counselor Hurst?
Yes.
Counselor Kerr?
Yes.
Counselor Mayor Pietri has a declaration. Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor McConkey?
Yes.
Counselor Neal?
No.
Counselor Nicholson?
No.
Mayor Carter has a declaration. Six affirmative.
That carries. Now we'll vote on a recorded vote, please, on three, four, and the bylaw.
Counselor Chapman?
Yes.
Counselor Guyberson?
Yes.
Counselor Gray?
No.
Counselor Hurst?
Yes.
Counselor Kerr?
Yes.
Counselor Mayor Pietri has a declaration. Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor McConkey?
Yes.
Counselor Neal?
Yes.
Counselor Nicholson?
No.
Mayor Carter has a declaration. Seven affirmative.
That carries. Now, if you would, so the mayor and I don't have to play musical chairs, but I have a motion to move item CNCL 20-10 to waive the rules, to change the agenda, to bring that forward.
So moved.
Counselor Marks, have a secondary. Counselor Kerr, all, okay? Recorded vote on moving it forward by Counselor Nichols. On the motion, okay, so let's waive the rules first, then. All in favor of the move? Pose. That's carried. Okay, so now we will go to CNCL-20-10, which also incorporates bylaw 23-2020. Any speakers? Being done, a recorded vote by Counselor Nicholson, please. When you're ready, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Nicholson?
No.
Counselor Chapman?
Yes.
Counselor Guyberson?
Yes.
Counselor Gray?
No.
Counselor Hurst?
Yes.
Counselor Kerr?
Yes.
Counselor Mayor Pietri has a declaration. Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor McConkey?
Yes.
Counselor Neal?
No.
Mayor Carter has a declaration. Six affirmative.
And that carries. Okay, mayor, you can have your chair back.
So picking up on the next item that has been pulled is DS 20-34, funding for the transit-oriented development evaluation exercise for the Lake Shore East GO train extension. This was pulled by Counselor McConkey. Counselor McConkey, you have the floor.
Thank you. I have two points to make. One, this was well discussed by you during the announcements this morning, Mayor Carter, the latest news on the transit-oriented development GO station coming to Oshawa north of the 407. I wanted to point out, just so we can maybe get a little bit of, I think Commissioner Adams' department promoting the fact that there is the public meeting, I think it's been on Twitter, the public meeting February 29th at the Ability Center between 11:30 and 1:30, where people can go and hear and ask questions, and there's also an online link to ask questions in advance. So I really hope we can get that promoted. But this DS 2034, this has to do with the actual region's study that was commissioned, and we paid one-third. And at the time this came to my attention before Christmas, I was asking to see the actual report, not just the summary. And staff have attached to the report that they'd actually received the invoice in November, and it was December 16th when council actually voted to pay. The invoice was, we were to pay, you know, December 14th, so before the actual council meeting. So it was never discussed at council that we hadn't actually received the actual study that we'd paid for, $47,000. So now we've received it. It's a confidential study. It's all well and good, but at the time this all came about, I made a motion to have a policy so that there is, it's actually there, that we never find ourselves in this position again, where we're paying for something and we're not actually getting a true copy of it. And I think it was Counselor Chapman that said, oh, yeah, we already have, but when I investigated to ask to see that policy, didn't see one. So I really would hope that when we realize that it's very important that we have these policies in place and we know of them, and able to refer them, future councils, not just us who've, you know, been through this experience now, but someone in a few years' time, they may not, things go quickly here as we know at the city, and certain things might just slip through. And the idea that we allow things to slip through, of course, is kind of concerning. Appreciate that the staff made a point of not paying for something that we didn't have a true copy, but I was just looking to see that we would have a policy on it. Now, that motion was defeated at council last, but there is no policy about that other than the fact that we've gone through this now. So that's the reason I pulled it, just to alert us when we ask to have a policy on something. It is helpful, I truly believe that's why we're here. So those are my points, and that's all I had to say on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Counselor Nicholson, please. To the item.
I'm not going to comment on what Counselor McConkey's raised. I think she's raised that point a number of times. I'm sure staff have heard her well. I just wanted to go on record, I was asking for a recorded vote on this, and also to indicate that, in my view, the money we spent on this is probably the best money we've spent in a long, long time. I believe that the fact that we were aggressive between Oshawa, Clarrington, and the region in preparing the report, in presenting that report to Metrolinks and to the province, I think it went a long way in, as achieving that the options that we wanted are the options that are being considered at this point. Anyone who had the time to read thoroughly the report that was developed saw that the option of using the CP lines through downtown, I call it the downtown part of my ward, as all the options were in my ward, that using the CP line through the Thornton's Corners, through the former Nob Hill property, furthering into Curtis and ended to downtown Boneville, it was the only option that made any true sense. And, you know, I think that if we had not invested our money and had not prepared this report, we may very well had the quick fix, easy solution that was being proposed of using the CP line, and that would have caused chaos in our community and a lot of lost opportunities. So there are times when government compete with each other and they don't cooperate. In this case, we had three levels of government competing, pulling in the same direction, working together, finding a proper way to explain to the province why this made sense, and basically using the province's own policies of economic development to convince them to do the right thing. Of course, the next step in the process is getting not just the approval of the Metrolinks Board, because I think that will go through. I don't think Metrolinks prepared a report not to approve it. But the important thing is we need to definitely get Premier Forward and the Treasury to release the funds, and I'm told there's already a great amount of the funds already seen in an account. They just have to be released by the province. I would like them to take a serious look at that 70-month schedule. I don't want a, you know, the sole event between now and the next provincial election to be a week before Election Day, someone doing a TOD turning. I think we need this project's TOD turning to be this year. We need the funding to be released this year. Their budget's coming up in a few weeks. What a, can't think of a better time than to release the funds. They should give a direction to Metrolinks to make this an absolute priority and get on with construction, and I think this entire operation should be open well before the 70-month projected cycle. We've waited long enough as a community for this project to be announced. It is time for it to be built, and it's time for all the controversy to go away, and let's get on with building the stations, building the operations, and getting it done. And it would be nice if it was done in a couple of years rather than five years.
Thank you for your comments. Counselor Mayor Pietri, you have the floor, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I'll be brief. I'll just thank staff, because I know that we engaged the process to do exactly what Counselor Nicholson indicated. I think you did a good job bringing council's interest and the community's interest alight. I think that the regional chair, as well as the region of Durham and its staff, along with ours, and all of the staff members that were involved, and representatives from the municipality of Clarrington did a great job as well. It's a transformative project. It's one that we hope finally gets delivered, and one that I think is going to be beneficial to our community for many generations. Now, when you talk about the report, I specifically want to thank staff for making sure that they did not pay anything towards the report, if not for the product that was delivered. And on that basis, I think Commissioner Monroe and our CAO, Mr. Paul Ralph, protected not only the taxpayers but council from ensuring that also that we were able to put our best foot forward in that things were ironed out behind the scenes with the province and Metrolinks. And moving forward, I think that, yeah, the report was not only a needed investment, but a very strategic and significant investment in leveraging what we needed for the community. Without it, I don't believe we were able to attain what we attained. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Neal, sir, you have the floor. To the item, please.
So as of today, are there any more announcements coming forward, or just tell me through, Mr. Chair, to staff, where are we today? Like, today? Today?
So my understanding is, this week, Counselor Neal, I think you were at the announcement, but my understanding is it goes to Metrolinks Board this week. What's today? The 18th? All right. This week, okay? Let me just try that again. That's my understanding. Then it'll proceed to Treasury. That's my understanding, and that's why my opening comments today were that each and every member, if I could ask on behalf of the city and your roles to be able to represent and continue to be able to advocate to make sure that this project not only gets Treasury approval, but also get approval to be able to move forward, because I think a lot of work is already being done, but we need everybody to be on board. So that's my understanding, sir.
So as a council, we just have to?
Continue to advocate, educate, and continue to work with our MPPs to make sure that they understand the importance of this project, sir.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much. Counselor Kerr?
Thank you, Mayor Carter. And just two quick points, let me. First of all, I think it ought to be remembered that this council was going to go all in on their own economic report to the tune of about $150,000, such to the extent that we felt this was absolutely critical to the economic and life quality of the citizens of Oshawa going forward. And then along came Clarrington and the region to take approximately a third each, and what resulted was a terrific cooperative effort to re-convince the government of the necessity of this project. I would also like to add my second point, that as to the economic necessity, it's also the viability. Because recently, we were in receipt of a big glossy publication called Renew Magazine, and inside of that was a little booklet that had the 100 biggest mega infrastructure projects in the country of Canada, and many of them related to GO Metrolinks. And one of them, two of them, three of them, rather, stood out. One of them was that Hamilton is slated for $10.17 billion of GO Metrolinks development. Toronto was scheduled for $15.67 billion, and there's Durham Region, $550 million. And yet, we came together, the three, the two municipalities in the region, with a plan that would, and I can't give the details, that would reduce the province's commitment to the point where there is absolutely, in my view, zero reason how they would not go ahead with this based on the cost. To me, it's shameful that they would even consider not approving this when they're going to spend billions and billions in other municipalities, and yet this project will probably do more for the economic viability of the province than the others. There's just no unconcept for me as to how this could be denied at this point and why the shovels shouldn't go in the ground next week. That's how important this is. So thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Seeing no other speakers, I'm going to ask for a recorded vote, Madam Clerk. Oh, was it Counselor Nicholson that asked for it? All right. Give it to him. No, 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 no. I don't hurt your feelings. Yeah. When you're ready, Madam Clerk, please.
Counselor Nicholson?
Yes.
Counselor Chapman?
Yes.
Counselor Guyberson?
Yes.
Counselor Gray?
Yes.
Counselor Hurst?
Yes.
Counselor Kerr?
Yes.
Counselor Mayor Pietri?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor McConkey?
Yes.
Counselor Neal?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Oh, yes.
Eleven affirmative.
Thank you very much. That was unanimous. Eleven, that's right. CNCL 20-08, council and committee meeting schedule was pulled by Counselor Nicholson. Counselor Nicholson, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions off the top, because I'm trying to understand the rationale for the weekly split on the four-week schedule. Currently, what I'm understanding, it's week one is Corporate Services and Development Services, week two, Community Services Committee and Finance Committee, week three is City Council, week four is no meetings.
Yes.
It seems that one of the arguments that was put regarding to the four-week schedule was to allow us to move items to City Council more expeditiously.
Yes.
Would it not? Would it not make more sense, then, that week three be the week with no meetings? That would allow for any emergency meetings, any special meetings to be dealt with that week, and then council be in week four, so that we can move more expeditiously on items that come up at the later minutes? If we go with the current process of having a City Council meeting in week three and something comes up, we'll either have a special council meeting, or we're going to look at a four-week delay to actually get it to council. At the region, the gap week is there before the regional council meeting, not after. Why would we not look at the gap week being the week prior to council? That would allow us two weeks of committee meetings, one week of anything that comes up as a surprise or as urgent matter, and then council. One of our staff could address that.
Not really sure who, which staff member wants to undertake this. I think Commissioner Adams, no? You're pointing back to our clerk. So I'm going to, that's good leadership. That's very good leadership, passing the buck. So Madam Clerk, to the question of Counselor Nicholson, please.
Through the chair. The whereas motion that was passed by council stated that the free week would be after the council meeting. If council wants to change that, they may do so as an amendment.
All right. It's, it's already passed. That, this particular thing has been passed altogether. It's just the schedule we are in front of us at this time. Is that correct? Madam Clerk?
It's the whereas portions. That is not the action. It's just basically statements.
So that the whereases are not part of the body of the motion? The motion doesn't tie us to the schedule. So what I'm looking for is, I want to give council the opportunity to have a gap week prior to council's meeting. Therefore, if something urgent came up, an item that the mayor yourself had to call a special meeting of a committee, or something came up between the end of the committee cycle and the fourth week council, we could fit it in there rather than fitting it after council and wait four weeks to action the item.
So I'm going to presume that it could be done. It would need an amendment to be able to bring forward. But that would mean that the clerk would have to go back and redo the schedule again to be able to make sure that it coordinates with the regional meetings also. That's what would be necessary.
Yeah. I did look, for the help of the clerk, I did look through the schedule.
Yes.
And it would fit. It would just mean changing the dates of the council meeting by one week.
Okay.
What I'm looking for, I guess, at this point is, an example, we had a Harvard meeting, workforce meeting on Thursday. We had an item where we wanted direct staff to take an action. But the council meeting was today. So we had, we couldn't get that action for the council due to the noticing procedures, et cetera, required to do that. That motion, which actually should have been expeditious, now is going to require either a special meeting of council or waiting until March 23rd before staff can start on the process. And I'm just trying to avoid a repetition of that issue. If we can find some way to give us more flexibility in week three, I think that will give us a more efficient week four.
Would you like to put a motion forward?
Yes, I would.
Okay.
And I will leave the clerk to choose what wording she thinks is necessary to achieve that effort.
The motion would reconsider the four-week cycle, and that City Council meetings would be held on the fourth week with the third week as a scheduled non-meeting time. Correct?